Our United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the physical with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing.
Our Heavenly Father, we ask your blessing tonight on this gathering of people that we will make decisions that will be good for our community and for our citizens. We ask your blessing, Lord, on those serving in our military and those watching over us in our police and our fire department every day. We ask, Lord, that you give us patience and you give us insight to make very wise decisions. We ask these things in thy name. Amen.
All right, Ms. Mayor, I apologize. I was just practicing in case you go out of town.
Apologies accepted.
I thought that was my job.
Well, you might go out of town too. You know, it's kind of...
Okay, I see that we're all present as we were in the work session, and we only have one communication item tonight, and that will be the Loma Linda Park renovation update by Mike.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of City Council. Just a very quick update on Loma Linda Park. As you know, back in 2009, 2010, we partnered with Saint John Vianney to do a master plan for Loma Linda Park, which they funded as a whole. The key point was that it was a very community-driven master plan, was later taken to City Council in June of 2010 and adopted by you all in August of 2010. As a result of that, we moved forward and put the design phase in the CIP for your approval, and you graciously appropriated $176,000 for the design phase. Shortly after the fiscal year began, we put out a request for qualifications for those design services, and after a lengthy negotiation period, we worked, you know, towards finalizing a contract with Olson and Associates for that $176,000. In a nutshell, what that $176,000 will get us is it will get us 100% construction documents on the northern two-thirds of the park. So basically, the open space, the playgrounds, the Ramadas, the tennis courts, a lot of the non-structure, non-facility-related areas of the park. We will also do programmatic schematic design for a new community center, and at this time we are actually going to leave the Loma Linda pool, the splash pad improvement, we'll leave that off to the side. The reason being is we need to do an assessment on that facility as a whole, and we anticipate, if approved, we anticipate being able to do that as part of the overall park's open space and trails master plan. We have already met with Saint John Vianney. We are scheduled to meet with the neighborhoods at the end of this month, and we will continue to involve all stakeholders throughout the process. It's expected the design phase will wrap up in October of 2012, so we will not be bringing any potential construction requests for funding to you until the earliest would be this time next year. Any questions?
Thank you. Questions? Councilman Stip?
Mike, is this in the...since I wasn't here last year, is this park improvement in the CIP already?
The design phase is. We have not included the construction phase because we don't have a hard and fast cost estimate to go on. We anticipate including that in the CIP next year as part of the five-year plan, and whether that settles in on 2014, 2015, 2016 will depend upon funding availability.
So it will not be in the document that we see in two weeks? Okay, correct. Just making sure, thanks.
Other questions? Vice Mayor?
Well, I know that, and that may be fine for this coming year, but I guess when we discuss budget and going forward, that was the Loma Linda Park amongst other items, you know, the right-of-ways, things like that. Those were all items that we were discussing prioritizing, and I guess we'll need to have that discussion again, but it sounds like it won't need to be for this coming budget time, correct?
Correct. The earliest we would bring that to you is this time next year, fiscal year 14.
Any other questions? Councilman Pizzillo?
Just quickly, is, I know with the economy being the way it is, is there any potential of getting...because I know it's a project that a lot of us up here would like to see happen, but obviously money is always an issue, but is there any grants or anything possibilities out there for this?
I think as we move through the design phase, we will get cost estimates along the way, and once we start honing in on those cost estimates, we'll identify either specific pieces of the park that a grant may be available for, or a larger, like, land and water conservation funding grant that might help with the overall renovation. We do anticipate being able to do some fundraising. Saint John Vianney has already pledged $30,000 towards construction, so it's very helpful that the city has not only funded the design phase, but we also then have, for the most part, some money in the bank to begin working with on fundraising.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you very much, Mike.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Now is the time for the citizens who would like to address the City Council on any non-agenda item. Do we have any cards? Okay, then we'll go on to the consent agenda. I'd like the city clerk, please, to read the consent agenda, item A.
Approved draft minutes of a regular meeting and a special meeting held on February 13, 2012.
Thank you. Does anybody in the public wish this item to be removed? Anybody in the council? All right, we'll just go on. I'd like a roll call, please.
Motion.
I need a motion first.
So moved, Ms. Mayor.
I hear a motion by Councilman Gelsner and a second by Councilman Stip. Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Osborn?
Aye.
Councilmember Pizzillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Loretano?
Aye.
Councilmember Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Gelsner?
Aye.
Councilmember Stip?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
Passes seven zero.
All right, let's go on to the business, and this is always a pleasure when we have something on the business agenda, the reappointments and appointments to the Planning Commission and Board of Adjustment. Harvey Kraus will present.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. On January 31st, the terms of commission members Luke Schlosser, Ryan Peters, and Karen Keith expired, and so they were...those terms are...were open and were considered by a subcommittee composed of council members Gary Gelsner and Wally Campbell and Bill Stip, looked at applications for Planning Commission as well as Board of Adjustment. One of the commission members, Karen Keith, who served also on the Board of Adjustment, relocated to California, which had to provide an open seat, and after review of 11 applications and interviews of finalists, the subcommittee of the council has recommended the reappointment of commission members Luke Schlosser and Ryan Peters to another three-year term, as well as the appointment of Vicki Hamilton to the Planning Commission. Vicki is a resident of Pebble Creek. She's been a resident of Goodyear for five years and has 32 years of experience in county government in Maryland. Also, Nancy Harrington was recommended for appointment to the Board of Adjustment. Nancy has been a resident of Goodyear for 11 years and owns a business in the West Valley, Mr. Handyman of the West Valley, and I'm pleased to present those names for appointment and reappointment to the commission and board.
Great, thank you very much. All right, now how we're going to do this is we're going to take each one of them separately. So we'll go with the first. We will ask for a motion to reappoint the commissioners Lucas Schlosser and Ryan Peters to the Planning and Zoning Commission for a three-year term expiring January 31, 2015, or until the successors are appointed or qualified. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
I hear a motion by Vice Mayor Osborn and a second by...
I'll take it. Stip.
By Stip, thank you. I didn't hear who, so open for council discussion.
I sat on the interview panel for these folks and everyone who applied. We, as a city, are extremely fortunate that we have a number of very talented people that are willing to give their time to serve both on the Planning Commission and on the Board of Adjustment, and it was...it's a pleasure, you know, as a new councilperson to see the kind of talent that we have and the people interested in serving. And I know we're only speaking about Luke and Ryan, but my comments really entail Vicki and Nancy as well and all the applicants. It was a very difficult pool to try to figure out, but, you know, we're just darn lucky.
Thank you for your comments. I really appreciate it. I'd like to agree with everything that you said on...so council, all in...oh, excuse me, Councilman Gelsner, yes.
I got to serve with Luke and Ryan when I was chairman of the Planning Commission, and I really do want to echo what Councilman Bill Stip said. It was a pleasure to serve with those gentlemen, and I was very supportive of their reappointment, and I'm looking forward to seeing three more years of really good work because, as we saw in the last presentation on real estate, things are starting to happen again in Goodyear. So thank you for your service, and we look forward to more service from you.
Great. Well, then, shall we vote on it? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. We'll go on to the second one. I would like to ask for a motion to appoint Vicki Hamilton to the Planning and Zoning Commission for a three-year term expiring January 31, 2015, or until her successor is appointed and qualified.
So moved.
I heard a motion by Councilman Gelsner and a second by Councilman Campbell. Council discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? The ayes have it. Let's go on to the other...the next one is ask for a motion to appoint Nancy Harrington on the Board of Adjustments to fill the unexpired term of Karen Keith, which expires on October 31, 2012, or until her successor is appointed and qualified. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
I heard a motion by Councilman Stip and a second by Councilman Loretano. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. And I think I went through them, so are we ready for the deputy clerk to give the loyalty oath to the new members of the Planning Commission and Board of Adjustment? So if you'll come forward. Again, we just have to thank our citizens that come forth and volunteer to do these jobs because it's a lot of hours, a lot of dedication, and it's a sacrifice on their families as well, so once again, thank you very much. We'll go to the business item. The last business item is considered adopting Resolution 12-1480, approving the settlement agreement between several parties, and we're going to have Sarah, because Roy...
She can handle it, yes.
Thanks, okay, fine. Sarah?
Yeah, it's up there.
Mayor, council members?
Could you bend that down just a little bit?
May I approach and hand out a copy of this?
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Mayor and Council, I'm before you with settlement agreement, which I hope is the last of our settlement agreements related to...
Can you hear it in the back? Okay, you do need to pick up loud, please.
Related to the ballpark project. As you know, when we undertook the development of the ballpark, we entered into a series of agreements with various entities controlled by Ken, Kenwood, Margaret Carl, and Clarence Wood, Pugwood. They had a development partner, Jack Rose, or entities that he controlled, and we had various agreements between those three parties, the Rose entities or the Civica entities, the Wood family entities, and the city for the conveyance of land and various issues related to the development of that land. We've gone through those agreements. I'm not going to go through each of those agreements, but as you know, there was falling out between the Rose entities and the Wood family entities. There was a default under various agreements with the city. One of the agreements was, and the most important that triggered a lot of what happened, was the infrastructure development agreement. That agreement required the construction of certainly...certain identified infrastructure, and it required the security for the completion, to ensure the completion of that infrastructure. As, you know, for reasons we don't really just go into here, at some point, the city terminated that agreement, and under the terms of the agreement, called the letter of credit proceeds, the security that was provided, and undertook the completion of a portion of the infrastructure identified in the agreement. We have about $5.7 million of the letter of credit proceeds and the city contribution. I don't know if we've identified where it's...which one is which, but a total of about $5.7 million that we've been holding because before we completed the rest of it, we started getting sued by everybody. We were sued by the bank that had basically loaned the Wood entities the money from which the letter of credit was provided. The bank sued us claiming entitlement to that money. They sued us for a declaration of their rights under the city agreements and the various reimbursements under those agreements, and they sued us for the right to...basically, the right to all of those city agreements. They wanted a declaration. They also sued the Wood family asserting claims...seeking judicial foreclosure. They were seeking to foreclose on the property, and the property that you can see is identified in this Elmo. No, this isn't going to work. The property in red that you can see, that was formerly owned by one of the Wood family entities, and the banks sought to foreclose on this, 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 and this. The property in green was owned by another Wood family entity, and the banks sought to foreclose on all of it. Here, 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 and here. The property here in yellow is owned by Sun 'n Peak. The city owns all of the property in orange. This is where the spring training practice facilities are, the Indians, the Reds. Right here, here is a parking parcel. This is our stadium, and the rest of the property in orange up there are parking parcels to provide 3,000 parking spaces. So that was what the bank suit was. We worked through the issues with the bank. About seven months later, we also received...were served with a lawsuit by the Wood families, and we'll call that the MPK litigation. The MPK litigation asserted various contract claims, tort claims, and a claims for unjust enrichment. The claims that the bank was...that the Wood family entities were asserting against the city were inconsistent with the bank's rights. It was like either you own the right to this money, they were claiming rights to the reimbursements, money that we were held, and the rights under certain of the agreements, and they were asserting breach of contract claims, and we're arguing that either you own it or the bank own it. The bank's position is, we own it, we own all the rights under these contracts, we're going to foreclose on the property and all of the contracts which were provided as security, but we were stuck in the middle. So we reached a settlement. We brought the settlement with M&amp;I Bank to you back in May of last year. The settlement has not taken effect because one of the terms of the settlement was until this issue was resolved, we can't move forward. We have to know who owns this particular claim. So although we've reached an agreement on the terms, it's been approved, we...until we get an order from the court or until this case is settled, we are kind of in limbo on that. So the claims with the bank were resolved or should be resolved by the settlement pending the resolution of MPK's claims. The settlement would resolve the...all of the MPK claims that are being asserted, tort claims, contract claims, the claims to reimbursements, everything that they've mentioned, ever mentioned, anything in any of the litigation, it's a very broad release, and it would settle that, and it would establish conclusively that all of the existing city agreements were, in fact, M&amp;I Banks, and they had the right to settle, and would trigger the effective date of our settlement agreement with M&amp;I Bank. In exchange for the settlement and the release, the city would pay M&amp;I...or would pay the MPK entities $1.1 million. Of this $1.1 million, the insurance...our insurance company would contribute $450,000, so the city would be responsible for funding $650,000. And M&amp;I Bank would contribute another $100,000. I'm sure it was bitter for them to have to pay another $100,000 when they took such a big loss on the loan, but, you know, for the reasons...for the same reasons we're recommending the settlement, which I'll get into, that's kind of why they're willing to pony up at this point as well. If the settlement agreement is approved, then within 10 business days after the effective date, we're to remit the funds to the Wood family's attorney, and then upon that effective date, the Wood family entities would execute a complete release, assigning all of the old city agreements to the bank, so that would trigger the effective date of our settlement. This lawsuit would be dismissed within three days after receipt of the payments, and again, the agreement provides a very broad release to the city for, you know, the third-party reimbursements that are owed, the, you know, any work that they did, any of the claims that were asserted, any of the allegations in there, very, very broad release. Anything related to the development of that spring training complex would be released. We're recommending the settlement for a couple reasons. First off, many of the claims that have been asserted are not covered by insurance, so the city has been funding the defense costs of all of the claims. Again, you've got contract claims, tort claims, and the claims for unjust enrichment, and those claims, and then our insurers are paying a portion of it, but it's been very costly for both us and the insurance company, and we still have a substantial amount of discovery. If we were to continue with this litigation, we'd be incurring a substantial amount of legal fees through trial because we'd have to be doing discovery, a lot of depositions because, truthfully, the Wood family didn't have a lot of direct involvement in a lot of this, so you're going to have a lot of third-party depositions that, you know, because of the number of documents involved in it, it's not going to be an inexpensive proposition to take us to trial and get us through trial. So we're going to have, you know, continued and substantial legal costs that would be avoided by the settlement. In addition, there's always risks associated with litigation, and the city staff feels strongly, you know, there's not anything that they did wrong in terms of this agreement. It was a very unfortunate situation, but, you know, we've all seen what happens when you get into...in front of a jury or in front of the court where you have a very sympathetic plaintiff, and clearly, these people were abused by, you know, not by us, but in our opinion, by their development partner, but there's always risks inherent with that. In this case, I think the risks are a little bit more because one of the claims that are...well, one type of claims asserted, the unjust enrichment claim, doesn't require a finding of fault. It's a claim that's based on you...we did certain things that benefited you and equity would demand that you reimburse us for the cost or the benefit that you received. And so, but when we've been in proceedings before the court, the court's been...has appeared, has made statements that suggest that they're somewhat receptive to the unjust enrichment claims. Now, again, we believe we have defenses, but it's an equitable remedy, and so you really run the risk because it's in the judge's discretion. So even though we are, you know, we have very strong defenses to the equitable remedy...this equitable remedy claim of unjust enrichment, it does present, I think, more of an exposure than, you know, even some of the other claims. And finally, the settlement of this case would allow us to proceed with the M&amp;I settlement, and I don't know if you recall, but with the M&amp;I settlement, we would acquire ownership of this parcel here and this parcel right here to the right, and we could move forward with the...we would be moving forward with the completion of Bullard Avenue from Lower Buckeye Parkway down to Estraya Parkway, and the completion of the additional lane on Estraya Parkway. And that would be, you know, that's also an obligation that's triggered in the M&amp;I settlement, so we get some further construction and development out that area that will maybe enhance the opportunity to develop that...develop the ballpark properties, the private property in that area. Economic development keeps coming and saying, can we market it? Can we market it? I don't know what's going on. I think that there's some interest out there for this, and I'm like, you know, not until we have a settlement agreement that's been approved by council, and then it still has to be approved by the bankruptcy court. So what would happen, the Wood family entities and the Wood family themselves have signed off on the agreement, the bank signed off on the agreement. Assuming council approves it tonight, we would sign off on the agreement, and then it's presented to the bankruptcy court for approval, and once it's approved, it would take effect. So I do think that, you know, having this property and moving forward with the development with, you know, I think there's interest out there. You know, I don't know what that interest is. I've kept pushing economic development back, but they keep coming in, and they're saying, now, now can we do it? Now we can...so I think there's opportunity out here, and truthfully, no one's going to look at this property, even though the bank completed the foreclosure on the property itself. No one's going to look at it till they know what their rights are, till they know what their ongoing obligations are for future infrastructure, till they know if they have a right to sales tax reimbursement. So until that agreement is in effect, nothing will happen out there, and so those are kind of the reasons why we're supporting it. M&amp;I Bank, I think, has the same reasons. There's, you know, they're putting in money after they've already lost all of this other money on the loan, so we're kind of in the same boat. Do you have any questions?
We'll wait for a moment, just stay there. Thank you very much. It's a difficult presentation to have to make. Could I ask the deputy city clerk to please...oh, would I have to have any discussion? Where am I? There is a speaker card? No speaker card, thank you. So since there aren't any speaker cards, I'll ask for a motion, please.
No, we need to...I need to read the...
Oh, I'm sorry.
Resolutions.
I'm sorry. I got so involved in this. I'm sorry. Please read the resolution.
Adopt Resolution 12-1480, approving the settlement agreement between the city, MPK Enterprises Incorporated, Eagle Tail Big Horn LLC, Swansia Properties LLC, Wood Family Enterprises LTD, Margaret M. and Shelby A. Carl, Sharon M. and Ken R. Wood, Clarence G. Wood, M&amp;I Regional Properties LLC, and BMO Harris Bank NA, authorizing and directing the city manager to execute the settlement agreement, authorizing and directing the city manager or his designee to take all actions and execute all documents necessary to carry out the intent of the resolution and the settlement agreement and providing an effective date.
Could I have a motion, please?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
A motion was made by Councilman Stip and a second by Councilman Gelsner. Open for council discussion. Councilman Gelsner?
Could you zoom in on the stadium area on Elmo or have somebody zoom in for you? Because you...I think you have to press the button on the...okay. Because you, I think you have to press the button on the, okay. You, you mentioned two, what I'm really interested in, yeah, I'm really interested in the Eagle Tail Big Horn properties that are there. And you mentioned the one that is off the right field line and the left field line. Okay, who owns the, the two properties to the north and northwest of the stadium? And who owns the parking area that is to the south of the stadium, you know, when this, when this concludes?
A subsidiary of, a former subsidiary of M&amp;I Bank. M&amp;I Bank was acquired by merger with this Harris Bank. But the bank will own this, this property right here, I'm sorry, this one here, here, and then here.
Okay, thank you very much.
Where you have the check marks on the map, is that, okay, for people that are looking at home.
Is that the end of your questions, Councilman?
I'm good.
I guess just for further clarification, when you go into the stadium, you have the area typically, you know, the Fourth of July where they had the bouncy, you know, down the, what is it, the first base side, is that the one that you were pointing where the bank will own?
Yes. No, they don't own that one. That was what, currently, it's, the property we're talking about is right to the right field, right here.
It's out of the ballpark.
It's currently inside our fence area, but technically, it's owned by the bank right now. So with the bank settlement, they will convey, as part of the settlement agreement, they're going to convey that piece.
And this.
This piece. Right now, both of these are within the fence area of the ballpark. So they're included within the ballpark, but technically, we don't own that. We've been, we've been using it under a license with the bank.
Okay, but I'm still trying to picture, the one on the, on the, what is it, the first base side, where is, is that part of where your pencil pen is as well?
That's it, right there.
Okay, and the one that's checked, the two checked north of that, no, the other one's north?
This is the one we will acquire, we will acquire, this one and that one.
Now, the, now the field where we have the gain event and where all that open field is, where is that in this map? Is that the one that you were talking about there, Councilman Gelzer?
No, that's to the west, that's, we own, we own the big parking lot.
We own that, okay, the one where the gain event?
Just south. It's just to the west of what the bank will own.
Okay. Thank you.
Those are all parking parcels that, you know, we might have to reconvey under the, we would have had to reconvey even under the original agreement if they provided substitute parking. And so that obligation, that reconveyance obligation, if substitute parking provides, runs with the bank as well. But right now, we own all of what's in orange.
Let me, just clarification there, because it's lawyer talk, I mean in English for me. The part where we had the gain event, that big open field where we put a lot of events and.
Excuse me, I'm going to, Roy, would you come up and just point out, so she doesn't have to lean, because what's happening? Can you, can you do that? I know you've been, he's hurting, so. I need to give him combat pay for this little trip here. Can you point out as Sarah talks so that people can understand, because it's hard for her, for you to hear her and have her point at the same time. So go ahead, Sarah.
Okay, all of the, all of the property that is in orange in the, in, north of Lower Buckeye Road, except for the ball field, all of that is really parking parcels. So in the original agreement with the Wood family, the parking, we, they agreed to provide us land sufficient for 3,000 parking spaces. So all of this property.
Here, 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 here.
And then the one parcel down there, all of that is necessary for 3,000 parking spaces. But each of the conveyance documents in the original agreement with the Wood family said, if you provide us a substitute parking, then we will reconvey that, those particular If they, if they gave us a, say they gave us a piece of property that could park 500 cars and they wanted to change it out, they could swap it out. So effectively, any of the green properties they own up there, north of Lower Buckeye Parkway, if they wanted to say, say that top one on the west side.
Where's that, Roy?
If they wanted to say swap that for the one immediately to the left of them, up higher, or any of them, if they wanted, if it were equal parking, they could do that. And we would, and that was part of our original agreement. That's not anything new. And that obligation remains even with the bank. So.
Is that something we both have to agree with or, okay. So that's nothing new. I mean, if they said, here's 500 spaces, you know, I want the area where, you know, we hold gain event or whatever, because I want to build something there, we don't have any, we don't have any say in that.
Not as long as they provide us replacement. But that was in the original agreement with the Wood family as well. I think it's about 20 more years.
Only reason why I ask is I really like that, that piece of land. We put a lot of, a lot of things sitting out there, I mean, but not besides gain, you know, I see it as future of doing a lot of special events because of the way that, you know, way that land lays out there, you know, out front, so.
Yeah.
I'm hoping that that's not in the near future, that we'll be able to use that.
Councilwoman Laura Tano?
I just wanted to clarify, just one quick question. Parcel that ends in 47 and 48 with the check marks, those are outside the fencing of the ballpark, right?
Yes, the two at the top.
Yes.
Yes, those are outside the fence.
But the other two, because they're, just to clarify for people watching, the other two that are conveyed to us are inside the fencing.
Yes.
And I think I see 49, the one at the corner, that's where the backstop is, right? The kids play?
Wiffle ball.
Yeah, the wiffle ball backstop. That grass parcel is 49. Okay, I just wanted to clarify.
Councilman Gelzer?
Okay, the parking parcels, when you talk about reconveyance, who has the development rights to those parcels? Is it, you know, is it the city? Do we own those now or do we, or, or how, how do these parcels move on in the future, especially with development, you know, starting to happen or will happen around the stadium?
We own the parcels, but there's kind of a reversionary interest or a contingency interest in terms of the reconveyance.
Okay, so.
But in the parking parcels themselves, in the deed conveying it and in the agreement, we are only allowed to use those parking parcels to support the ballpark events and then city-sponsored events, but not for purposes that will compete with the private development. So we could not take, and this is under the original agreement with the Wood family, we could not take one of the parking parcels and allow private development on it. It's not intended to compete in any way with any of the private development. We carved out one exception because they didn't acquire the retail liner. So, you know, if they're not going to acquire it, we would be able to sell it for, you know, a business purpose. But other than that, we're limited to using it for parking or for city-sponsored events like we've been using it. We couldn't use it for private development.
Okay, so if I understand this correctly, the three parcels that remain with Eagle Tail or, yeah, Eagle, Eagle Tail Big Horn.
Well, they've been foreclosed on by the bank by now, so, yeah.
Okay, but that's the name that I, okay. Those parcels have, those can be swapped out with any parking parcel and can, and the bank can sell them and then they can be developed. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, and now, once they're developed, do we have development rights to the other remaining parcels that we use as, that are parking as long as we continue to support parking? In other words, if we build a parking structure on one of these parcels, can we sell the other one off to, as a development or can we develop on it?
No, not until the reconveyance obligation expired.
Okay, but if the, if the three parcels that the bank controls, if they develop them, do they surrender their reconveyance rights at the end of the development, once they've developed them and sold their rights to it?
No, because I think that, you know, we really didn't consider that, that as a possibility because it was more like the city's not putting up a parking structure. But we really considered that they might put up a parking structure to free up some of that other, other property for private development.
Okay, so, so this is up for negotiation with, the only entity that we actually have to deal with now in the future is the successor to the, to the bank.
Right.
Who owns these three parcels and they have rights.
Right.
Some rights to acreage in the other city-controlled areas.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Vice Mayor Osborne?
Well, this, unfortunately, there's no win here in this situation. And for our citizens and for our city, I think that the risk and the time is not worth it. And we need to move forward. So I will be voting in favor of this.
I would like to say one thing and, you know, I mean, this is, was, I think, 108 million dollars, I don't have the exact amount, but we're talking about us contributing, well, even if you consider the whole full settlement, we're talking about maybe 1% of the project cost, you know, and we're not paying all of that, you know. 550,000 of the 1.1 million will come from either our insurance company or from the bank. And so when you kind of put it into context of the overall projects of this nature, it's really not, we weren't, we didn't overrun on this project. My understanding is we actually were, we were actually to be able to do more than we thought we could because we came in under budget. So in terms of the budget and what we were planning on in this project, I don't think this settlement throws us out of whack in that, in any way.
Any other comments? Well, in fact, I got lost when you were presenting it, just thinking about each step that we went through when our first idea came up about having a stadium and our relationships with the people that were involved in this. And so there was some unfortunate things that happened beyond our control. And it is, it is a very emotional time. And I think that it's, it's time that we had to bring it to a head and finish it up. And some of those memories and heartaches and are going to linger, but I think this is the time to, to finish it up and then we'll just get on with whatever is next going to happen with our stadium. So I appreciate the presentation, it was a difficult one to give. And I'm sure there are people out there who are going to have lots of questions. So your email will probably be buzzing, so, but thank you. Anything else from the council? Okay, so I guess we're ready for a roll call.
Councilmember Pizzillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Laura Tano?
Aye.
Councilmember Campbell?
No.
Councilmember Gelzer?
Aye.
Councilmember Stip?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Osborne?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
Passes 6-1.
Thank you, thank you very much, Sarah, once more. And Roy, thank you, I know you had to hobble up this evening with your injury and I really appreciate that.
Thank you for the council, for the support in this project and Sarah for all the hard work, but thank you.
You're welcome, thank you. Does the council have any comments or commendations or reports on your activities? Vice Mayor?
I have one. Friday, I had the honor of being with a bunch of eighth graders at Estraya Community College. They were having a career fair and I was the token politician. And they asked me what kind of money we made and was it a secure job? And is there growth to this job? It was kind of funny having to answer those. And I flat out told them, no, you do this kind of job because you love your fellow man. And I own my own business, so there's income coming other places. I had to explain that to them. And had a great time at our opening day of spring training and good 50 kids at Fear Factor Saturday night getting grossed out. Thanks a lot.
Councilwoman Laura Tano?
I don't know if we said this, I was looking at the dates. Councilmember Campbell and I, we attended a tour of the Mobile Waste Facility and the Mobile School and everything. And it was very interesting, learned a lot about garbage and how it functions and where it goes from. And they have a lot of really good recycling programs. We attended the Cactus League baseball breakfast to kick off our Cactus League and our opening day, and that was great.
Very good. Other comments? Councilman Stip?
Oh, was that the opening of spring training? And the memorial ceremony for Brett Fencer on Sunday, that was absolutely phenomenal. I don't know if Mike is still here, yeah, I see him in the back. Your, your staff did a great job, great memorial. It was very inspiring to see them come together and, and bring Brett's family out. They enjoyed it. The baseball teams were unbelievable in their dedication and the respect that they showed for, for Brett. I was, you know, a lot of people talk about professional athletes and their, and their egos and there was not a single ego out there on Sunday. And I thought that was, that was absolutely amazing. So our two clubs, the Indians and the Reds, did an awesome job and they showed real character toward our community and I really wanted to make sure that they were recognized for that.
I just want to add too that the staff donated money for this event. So they didn't use any of the city's money and they flew the parents out and the family out. And I think that, that says.
Great, yes.
A great deal about our staff and how they feel. Anybody else here?
I just, just want to echo, again, I was really impressed with what the Reds and Indians both did as well as city staff of that event. So great job, Mike and staff.
Anything down here? Okay, well, I'll go. Cactus League breakfast was really great. It was sort of fun meeting some of the different people that are there. Tony, was this Lassardo, I should know his name, right?
Tommy Lassardo.
Tommy Lassardo. He was, Lassorda, thank you. And he was a very good speaker and with lots of enthusiasm. One of the things that I did do this week, which was worthwhile, is tour an Alzheimer facility in Surprise. And I took Rose Beals with us, who runs our Yana program. And it, it was very enlightening and worthwhile tour to see what possibility of what someday we might have here in Goodyear. And the youth commission finally got together with them and, you know, Mr. Spice takes care of all that and does a great job. And so that was a nice event. And the opening day was really well done by everybody, the teams and what they contributed and the crowd, it was, it was what, how many people?
6,500 on Saturday.
6,500 people, I won't be lucky. So we want to thank all the parks and rec people and all the volunteers. My golly, we have great people in Goodyear that volunteer and work very hard. And it was very sunny those two days, so everybody got a little pink faces, so it was just great. So with that, I'm just going to end this. I'm sure some of you are aware that Rob Antoniak, who used to be a council member with us, was in an accident this last week. And he, it was a fairly severe car wreck, Litchfield and Thomas. And so he wrote this letter to me and I just thought I'm going to read it because it really tells what type of city we are and what our police and fire do. So he says, "As a former policymaker in Goodyear and during my time in public safety, we constantly touted a seamless, patient-centric, efficient and timely system. It was not until you are a patient or a victim of an incident that you truly appreciate all the decisions, training and professionalism that goes into making the system work. Yesterday by far had to be the most frightening experience in my life and within two minutes, a sense of calm was brought to the scene. My safety and that of the other person involved were clearly the most important things to be addressed in short order. And looking back at my phone calls and timestamps, I attended, I was attended to within two minutes of my 911 call and was packaged, stabilized and routed to St. Joe's under 10 minutes. Stats like this are amazing and should be commended. Please pass along my deepest gratitude and appreciation to the men and women of the fire and the police that were on the scene quickly and attended to my needs as well as that of a 19-year-old girl. I wish I could remember all the names, but given the extent of my shock, I didn't exactly take notes. That said, I noted the exceptional professionalism of the 911 operator who took my call and the crew from Station 183 Motor Office, Buddy D., Office Ryan, Wood Family grandson, as well as several others. As for me, I was very fortunate that the guardian angel was on my shoulder during the event. Given the circumstances, it could have turned out much worse. I checked out of St. Joe about 10:00 AM yesterday and most of my injuries are bumps, bruises and strains and a knee injury. And that'll get better after MRI." I could go on, on as many of you were used to on Monday nights, but bottom line, thank you. My family shares in the feelings of thanks and gratitude toward our local public. My family shares in the feelings of thanks and gratitude toward our local public safety personnel, Rob Antoniak. So, I just, you know, that's, that's an action happening, and until it happens to you, you just, you just take it all for granted, so, round of applause for our public safety. City manager, comments?
I have nothing this evening, Madam Mayor.
Okay, well, with that, we're going to join this, adjourn it? Adjourn this meeting. Adjoin it? We might have joined it, too.